This way in a very long time, but here we go. I'm going to call the January 16th, 2024 meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education to order at 7:01 PM. With a reminder to all those watching and participating remotely to kindly mute your microphone to avoid any background noise. This meeting is being held strictly as a remote meeting. The public may attend electronically via WebEx with the link provided. This meeting is being recorded, is being recorded, and the recording will be available on the district website. At the January 10th meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Ms. Lauren Francisi was appointed to fill the vacancy of Dr. Maria Madonick, who resigned to take on a position at the Board of Selectmen. And Lauren was sworn into office this morning, and so tonight I'm happy to officially welcome Lauren to the board. Welcome, Lauren. We're happy to have you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for the warm welcome, and I'm honored to be appointed and to serve and hopefully do the best I can. Maria left some big shoes to fill. She did a great job, and I'm a Beecher grad and I'm a public school educator, so I'm excited to work with everyone and, and serve this board for the remainder of Maria's term.
Thank you, Lauren. The one thing Lauren didn't share was that, being a Beecher grad, she's a graduate of Ms. Piazek's first grade class, so.
Yes.
There's a whole circle for you.
Yeah, I also see Chris Hart Rooney on here, who was my fourth grade teacher, so we could go, we could go on and on.
There you go. There's a little history, and it's, well, it's wonderful to have you, Lauren. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
So I'll call the roll this evening. Stephen Lawrence, Vice Chair.
Here.
Secretary Sarah Beth Delpreet. Think she's going to be a little late this evening. We'll keep an eye out for her. Dr. Jay Daya. Ms. Lauren Francisi.
Here.
Ms. Brooke Hopkins. I'm hoping Brooke isn't on. She has like 103 temp. Okay. Mr. Jeff Hughes.
Here.
Dr. Michael Strambler.
Here.
Ms. Erin Williamson.
Here.
And I'm Lynn Piazek, the Chair. Thank you. Staff in attendance this evening, Ms. Vonda Tenza, Superintendent, Ms. Donna Koonen, Director of Business and Operations, Ms. Carrie Borsherding, Director of Special Services. Looking to see if Lisa's on.
Lisa.
Ms. Annalisa Sherman, there she is waving, Principal, Mr. Jimmy Sapia, Assistant Principal, Ms. Cheryl Toffel, Assistant Principal, and Ms. Marcia DiGennaro, Clerk of the Board. Marcia, is it possible for you to share your screen with the flag and we will proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance? Once we see that. We're going to give it a shot and see if we can do this, folks. Marcia, hang on. I'm doing this. Tell me if you can see this, everyone.
Yes.
There we go. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're moving on to correspondence. Emails and letters that have been received by the board as board correspondence prior to 4:00 PM today have been posted online in Board Book. Of note is the resignation of Dr. Maria Madonick, which is included in board correspondence, as I mentioned before. The board certainly wishes Maria well as she begins her term of office on the Board of Selectmen. Moving on to Item 1D, Public Comment. If you wish to make public comment, would you please raise your hand in the participants list? I've scrolled twice and, and I don't see anyone. Marcia, do you?
I'm not seeing anyone either, Lynn.
Thank you very much. 1E on the agenda is the PTO update. Ms. Cindy Krueger, President of the PTO, has reported that everything is on track with the PTO, and there is nothing significant to add this evening since we just pretty much returned back to school from the December break. Item 2 on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The minutes from the December 18th regular meeting are included in this evening's consent agenda, along with a budget narrative, a budget summary, the detailed financial report, and the combining financials. Does anyone on the board wish to extract anything from tonight's consent agenda for discussion? Airing nothing on that. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I can make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second for that?
I second.
Stephen Lawrence. Motion made by Jeff Hughes, seconded by Stephen Lawrence. Board members, because we are remote, we have to call the roll for every vote that's taken. So please unmute and cast your vote when I call your name. Stephen Lawrence?
Yes.
Sarah Beth Delpreet not here. Jay Daya?
Yes.
Lauren Francisi?
Yes.
Brooke Hopkins not here. Jeff Hughes?
Yes.
Michael Strambler?
Yes.
Erin Williamson?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The vote is unanimous, Marcia. Thank you very much. Moving on to number 3 on the agenda. First item under Reports is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Okay, great.
You're good.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd also like to welcome Lauren. You know, just to point out also, in addition to an educator's hat, as a upper-level coordinator of social studies at Staples High School in Westport, Lauren is a parent to Erin in first grade and Nicholas, who I believe is in sixth grade. And I sincerely appreciate how quickly she hopped on board to be able to participate in tonight's meeting. Our enrollment report is attached in the, in the documents. Our current enrollment is 876 students. I want to share that we are pleased to announce that we have a new sixth-grade teacher who will begin on Monday, February 5th. Jessie Rehm, R-E-H-M, comes to us with about 10 years of experience teaching fifth and sixth grade in Stratford, Connecticut. She holds a Masters of Science in Instruction, as well as a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science and Journalism. Many of Jessie's trainings and experiences align well with Beecher Road School, and the committee was especially impressed with her, her demeanor, but also her training in responsive classroom, reading workshop, and culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning, as well as some work with restorative practices. Her demo lesson was outstanding, and we are excited to have her join us. She's a mom of three and thrilled to be joining our school in February. She's also going to spend a few days of transition with us as she finishes out her stay in Stratford. I think she's going to spend some of her personal time with us. Regarding our budget, as you are aware, the Board of Education's approved budget was submitted to the Board of Selectmen. Last week, we present to the Joint Boards of Selectmen and Finance, I believe it's Thursday, January 25th at 7:00 PM. I think that's what Donna and I researched. Donna and I will be present for this, and I encourage the board to join us in presenting the Board of Education adopted budget, as well as the capital budget at that meeting. I'm also pleased to share that after Monday night's successful support of the partial roof and site work, Donna and I finished the roof reimbursement application and managed to submit it before the January 10th deadline. That quick turnaround was impressive, and due to Donna's commitment to detail and planning, many, many hours with a very unfriendly platform. Very cumbersome platform, and we're hopeful it makes this first round of awards. We should hear by the end of the month. If not, we revise and we try again for February 10th. So they have a rolling every month deadline. The sooner we can secure people to do the work, the better. Summer jobs in, in districts are scheduled early, and we are competing with other districts for similar projects, but we are positively hopeful. And we also began discussions prior to this with our administrative team at BOA regarding potential locations for our summer programs. We have extended school year and summer enrichment, and I need to notify REC have of the potential need for an alternative space for their summer program as well. So more to come on that, and I, I do just want to publicly remind everybody that this project, while it seems to be huge in time and effort and cost, it does address only about a quarter of our total Beecher Road School roof. It represents a section of the roof that has appropriately aged out and served its purpose. So please remember that much like a home, the school needs ongoing maintenance and monitoring, and I can assure you that I'll be back to the table discussing additional roof replacement and repairs as time passes. So please don't think we're done. We're appreciative, but I just want to caution everybody that it's, it's not a one and done. And I think the rest of the pieces that I'd like to say will fall later because we have retirements later, and we also have a little bit on space needs and planning. So everything else, I think, will fall later.
Thank you, Vonda. Board members, any questions on that portion of Vonda's report this evening? Okay, I don't see any. We'll move on to approve building needs and space planning proposal. That's you, Vonda, as well?
That's me. I gotta go back to my notes. Okay, so. Every once a month, I provide a, a regular update to the Board of Selectmen at their meeting. They invite me as a guest, and I really appreciate that time to connect with our, our town. This past Wednesday night, I also was asked to provide a letter, you know, asking the Board of Selectmen for support and commitment with Construction Solutions Group and elements of our space utilization work that we've been, you know, examining how best to address the growing population and use of instructional space in our building because we are running out of instructional room. So I do feel that the meeting was very positive and productive, and the Board of Selectmen was very supportive of the elements outlined by the Construction Solutions Group proposal. So I just want to hit on some of the outcomes of that meeting. One of the outcomes of the meeting included the Board of Selectmen requested, and Donna and I agreed that we absolutely will do this week, that we revise our 2025 through 2030 capital budget request to include the later phases of the project and, you know, the larger study in that six-year plan. So we will do that. Additionally, Board of Selectmen requested that we, as a Board of Education, fund the first, the initial two phases from our current Board of Education budget surplus at approximately $9,500 per phase, as we do have a current strong surplus. The Board of Selectmen agreed, you know, through a lot of discussion, that there would be no expectation that the Board of Education would be responsible for funding additional phases. The whole thing truly is seen by the entire group as a capital project. We just happen to have some funds now that we could get started a little bit sooner than waiting until the summer. If we wait, funding requests would need to go through the Board of Selectmen and Finance and may take longer to become approved. If we use our surplus funds now, some of them, the work could be initiated immediately to start the development of the RFQ/P process. So therefore, this evening, I am again making the recommendation that we use some of our current surplus funds to begin this work, similar to how we used surplus funds last year to conduct the required air quality audit that we just repeated, just completed. As a reminder, we did select with board approval Construction Solutions Group for many reasons, and we look forward to working with them. So I, I just put before you the request to use some of our surplus funds now to get started on that work.
Thank you, Vonda. So just to get the discussion started, I'm going to make the motion. I move that we approve the building needs and space planning proposal as presented and authorize the Superintendent to enter into a contract with CSG Construction Solutions Group and to fund Phase 1 and 2 from the 2023-2024 operating budget. Do I have a second to that motion?
I can make the second.
Thank you, Jeff. Motion made by Lynn Piazek, seconded by Jeff Hughes. Any discussion? So Board members, rather than calling on everybody, if you have a comment, raise your hand and I'll try to see you. Go ahead, Jay.
Thanks, Vonda, for going back after last meeting where some of us were concerned about the long-term implications of funding on this project. I'm always hesitant to fund anything that isn't operating from an operating budget, but in this case, I understand that there seems to be a full understanding from the town, from us, that everything going forward after these first two stages will be capital investment. Am I clear with that? And with that said.
That's my understanding as well.
I'm wholly supportive of this. I think this is a great idea. We get the first two phases completed within the timeframe that we would like them done. I just wanted that the town agreed that this was a capital project in the long run, and it wouldn't be funded through any operations going forward.
Yeah, if you all agree, we will be amending our capital budget that will get presented next Thursday to include the future phases past 1 and 2 and the eventual feasibility study as well.
Thank you, Donna.
And, and I will just reiterate, you know, I appreciate that, Jay, and I, again, I, I see both sides. I see it as capital work completely. You know, I, Donna and I judiciously protect the operating budget for teaching and learning, and at the same time, you know, when the first Selectman, he, he did a nice job of saying, I see both sides too, right? This is all about teaching and learning. However, we do have a, a large surplus that we could use a small piece of. And it just, you know, it, it makes sense to me for us to think about it in the similar way that we did tackle proactively and very positively our air quality issue as well.
Okay, thanks, Jay. You can put your hand down so that I know you're set unless you have another question. Thank you. Anybody else? You have another one, Jay?
I think he's waving.
I think you're waving to me too, Jeff. It's okay. Don't worry about it. And you're muted, so we can't hear. We can't hear that you're being frustrated.
I think it's gone off now.
By that waving hand. Okay, so I, it doesn't appear that there's any other comments. After we take the vote, I have a, a question, Vonda, but let's start with the vote. Stephen?
Yes.
Did Sarah Beth sign on? I think I'm getting a text from her. I don't know if she's a call-in user. Let me just check this.
I do see her logged in.
Okay. Sarah Beth, are you here to vote? Yep. On the CSG project? Yes?
I mean, yes. Yes, I mean, yes.
Thank you, Sarah Beth. Jay?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's unanimous, Marcia. Thank you. And it's exciting to get started on this. Thank, Vonda, thank you. Donna, thank you. So my question to you, Donna and Vonda, is I know that you've been asked to modify the capital budget. Now, we approved the capital budget without that in that. Do we need to take a vote to authorize you to include these costs in the capital budget that we're going to present to the town or not? Are we set with that?
The additional costs?
The ones that, that, the modifications to the capital budget that you're going to make.
The later phases.
The later phases. Do we need to vote on that now, tonight? To approve that being presented to the town?
I think it's a good idea because what we're taking, asking the Board of Selectmen to approve is, would be different than what you guys approved, you know?
Right, right. So I'm not sure what the motion should be, and either Marcia, Vonda, or Donna can correct me, but I'm going to make a motion to authorize the Superintendent and Director of Business and Operations to modify the proposed 24-25 capital budget to include the later phases of the building needs and space planning proposal costs. Does that sound like?
I think it's the 25 through 30.
Yeah.
Capital budget. And then I would include, yeah, the future phases and the feasibility study, or, you know, an estimated cost of the feasibility study.
Study. Okay. Do you have that, Marcia? Something like that? Adding those two things? That Donna mentioned?
Jay has his hand up.
Yep. Hang on a second.
Phases 3 through 5 of that proposal include the feasibility study as well as the other options under that.
Okay, so if you put 3 through 5 modified, including phases 3 through 5, that would be my motion.
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, so I've made that motion, and. Do I have a second to that motion? Jay is seconding that motion. Okay, discussion on that motion, which is the modification, authorizing the Superintendent, the business, Director of Business, then Operations to, to modify that budget and send it off to the town, modified. That's the, that's the motion. That's the second. Any discussion or questions about that? Jay, you have a question? Go ahead.
Very quickly, does that change anything on the existing capital budget? So now you're asking for a lot more in the next five years. Does that change the asks that are already on the table? And if they do, then I think we might need to see that. However, if you're just adding in the new numbers, then I think we can vote on it. That's the way I would see it. So if nothing fundamentally is being affected, then I'm good with this.
Okay, my motion was just to authorize them to add it.
Yeah.
So am, am I wrong, Vonda or Donna? In that motion?
No, I think that's fine, but if it gives, so, you know, the numbers that we have in there for the ultimate eventual space reorganization, whatever, capital project, they're all, you know, they're all funny bunny numbers anyway. You know, we can just, I could take one of the out-years down and move it sooner because we kind of had them like starting two years out. I could take whatever we determined to be phases 3 through 5 and a feasibility study, you know? Instead of saying 20 million a year, just because we don't know what it's going to be. We just have these big numbers in these out-years. We could take, you know, whatever, $150,000 of that, and then the final number would be the same, or we can just add $150,000 or whatever we think it's, would cover this to next year.
So very quickly, I think you've done this before, Donna, where you put in a line at the top. And so if you just put in these changes right at the top with the existing capital and just make the new sort of total at the bottoms, I think that's what Lynn's.
Yeah.
Proposal, and I think that's what I would see as the most feasible option here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
So just put that line in so everybody understands what's going on with that. And then the rest of it is the budget that we did approve already, the capital budget.
Yep.
And that would make it easy for everybody here and everybody in the town to understand why we've separated that out. Does that make sense?
Yep. Great. Thank you, Jay, for the clarification for all of us. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, I don't see any, so we're going to call for the vote. Stephen?
Yes.
Sarah Beth?
Yeah, from a yes.
Thank you. Jay?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. And I think we've done everything we need to do so that it's copacetic and kosher for, for the town. So thank you all for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Special Education Update. Do you have an intro, Vonda, or are we just going to carry?
Okay, so, you know, my intro is, is brief, but I do have one, just to set the stage. So last year, we were fortunate to have Board of Education support to add an additional administrator to our team, Cheryl Toffel. And we have welcomed her with open arms, and she hasn't missed a beat. This report is not about how are we better because of Cheryl. I do think that you will see threads of how the entire team is able to function at a higher level with what is best for students. Simply because the entire team is able to address more. So I asked Carrie to kind of put together some information, some data, some numbers about where we are, maybe with a little bit of comparison to where we were last year. And at the same time, I asked her to sneak in a little professional learning, because we have you captive, to just kind of give everybody the same vocabulary and language around special education and the process that we have here at Beecher Road School. So Carrie practiced. She says it's roughly about 10 minutes, so we get to sit back. And Carrie is going to give us a, a great overview of what we are all about at Beecher Road School and special education.
Thank you. It's 10 minutes, as long as I don't quick talk.
There's no pressure.
Uh, right. I am trying to share my screen. And I think. When I clicked on earlier, I could do it. Now it's telling me I have a privacy setting, so how do I do this?
Same thing with the flag, Carrie. We practiced earlier, but.
I know. I, when it wasn't, when I logged in just to WebEx, I was able to do it. But now it's saying because screen recording, it's not letting.
Marcia, is there anything, Marcia, that Carrie needs to do to share her screen?
She should be able to, to share it. Anyone in this meeting is allowed to be able to share the screen.
Could you give her a tip on how to do that, please?
What I can do is upload. If it can help, I can upload it and share it for mine, if that will make it any easier. I don't know.
Yeah, that would be great. If you could do that, I would really appreciate it. It's saying that I can't.
I can't either.
That WebEx won't, you can't either, Vonda? It's saying there's a privacy firewall.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that's about, Carrie.
Thank you, Marcia. Thank you. So Carrie, you can probably start a little bit.
That's still, that's fine. I'm I'll just go right through like kind of the beginning overview and then we'll get to the slides. So basically, as Vonda said, I want to give you some information on what our current numbers are compared to last year, especially as we're looking at kind of what it looks like with staffing, the number of referrals, the the whole process, what is special education, what is 504? Great, thank you. Um, and then, um, current programming and some focus areas that I'm working on this year with the rest of the team um, around kind of how can we build capacity within the building and really work to support independence for students? So, Marsha, I think if you can go to the third slide, that would be great. Thanks. Um, so the purpose of special education, um, the main purpose is to allow students to with disabilities to access their general education curriculum as closely as possible to their typical peers. So providing students the opportunities to build on their strengths in certain areas, uh, foster that independence in terms of students requesting help from teachers or what accommodations they need, also looking at what type of assignment is given and can the student present the information about what the topic is, but maybe in a different way. Um, it does blend very nicely with some of our personalized learning, um, and and even some universal design for learning as students uh, think about the way that they want to either do a big project for the end of a a class, um, some kids will do, for example, a a project of a PowerPoint and some might write a report. But if both get the information on what they've learned, then that's great. It's a just another way to present. And, um, also to talk a little bit about curriculum and some, um, work that we've done this year on looking at some other pieces of curriculum. Um, the next slide gives some information about who we are. So the total population is eight hundred and seventy six, as we talked about earlier in the meeting. And we have eighteen students currently in our preschool program. We have a morning threes and afternoon fours class. Uh, right now, twelve point nine percent of the school is eligible for special education. You, um, want to stay under the fourteen to fifteen percent range. That's about what it is in the state. It has gone up in many areas, um, post COVID. So we're looking really good where we are in identifying students and who needs support. And then also, uh, in terms of 504, which doesn't fall under special education per se, but they do some have somewhat of a link to them, and I'll discuss that in a little bit. Um, we do have fifty six, um, current students and six point four percent of the school. So the next is a breakdown of students and what disability category that they fall into. You can see that from last year to this year, it it's very similar, um, which we would kind of expect to see. The reason it may change, um, for example, the second category developmental delay is a category that you could only have until you're turning six. At that time, you have to fall into another category or you're no longer eligible for services. So that category, we had a few students who had eligibility under that category that now are fitting into a different one. Uh, you could see the biggest area, um, as you would probably expect would be, um, specific learning disability, um, dyslexia and speech and language impairment. Um, the other area would be the ADD, ADHD, which is often an area which can blend into 504. On the next slide. All right, so our teachers and our related service providers, these are, um, the this is the breakdown of kind of where where we're falling right now with, um, support within the building. So, uh, we have the one pre-K teacher who teaches the morning and the afternoon. We have six resource room sections, um, an intensive resources, uh, section, which essentially is uh, students who are in their general education class, but they may receive more co-taught type needs, or they'll come out for more significant amounts of time for perhaps reading instruction or math instruction. We have a social emotional learning classroom. We have two lower and an upper grades and same with life skills. Then, as we get into our related services, we have currently a one point five social work positions, two point five psychologist positions. We are still hiring for the point five. The speech pathologist position, we have two point five staff, one OT, and we'll be adding a little bit more time next year, um, for the OT support. And right now we're using about six point five hours a week of physical therapy time. Currently, we have twenty five paraprofessionals that are assigned to special education. Um, as you know, all of our paraprofessionals are in the same union and same group. So we assign them as needed. Um, at this time, we have twenty five working and we do have a few vacancies. So supporting the whole learner is really a much bigger process than just what can the special education team do to support the student? It the students in special education are first general education students. So how are they accessing their regular ed environment and their typical peers? How are the teachers collaborating? We have a huge amount of collaboration between general ed and special ed teacher teams, not just during PPT meetings, but we do have them, um, in our PLC meetings. We have teams of teachers that meet up that way. We have, um, modifications and accommodations that are discussed um, in terms of what specific students need. And you know, the nice thing that has happened with a few of the accommodations is that when the teacher goes to put them in place, they actually end up being a great accommodation for the whole class. So a student who might need a graphic organizer or a couple of options of graphic organizer can sometimes turn into, the whole class has a couple of options for graphic organizer and figuring out which one works best for you. Um, we also do a lot of collaboration and consultation with families. Um, you know, families are the ones who know their student best. So, you know, we may have something come up within the school day and really ask, how do you help problem solve this with us? Or when you see this at home, what is your way that you handle it? Um, and we also share a lot of outside resources for families, um, with specific student specific needs. Um, the other piece we do a lot of is reflection and professional learning. This year, I feel like we've really, on top of the professional learning that we're getting as a whole school, we also have really targeted some specific areas for both, both the paraprofessional group and our special education team. Um, and on the next slide is just a list of some of the opportunities that we've had. Um, this year, we've had our two speech pathologists go to the ASHA conference. We've updated some of our literacy training. There are, there's a cohort of teachers doing a structured, structured literacy support program currently through CREC. Our paraprofessionals have had access to master teacher online training. And, um, at the beginning of the year, we did a introduction to behavior uh, learning, professional learning opportunity with our BCBA. With all the new information coming out about dyslexia and the new information from the state, we've sent some people to eligibility with dyslexia and cognitive evaluations. And then also the new, um, method for looking at dyslexia, looking at another way to identify under a pattern of strengths and weaknesses. So we've had some staff go to those trainings as well as looking at some other curricular pieces. And I'll show actually a couple of pictures at the end, um, of some of the work that we have been doing with the unique learning systems curriculum and, um, and I believe there also is a slide that has some pictures with the everyday speech program that we're using with our counseling team. So last year, when it was the three of us, we had the supervision of teachers um, and were able to split up how we were supporting teachers within the classroom teacher evaluation process. We this year are able to reduce the number of teachers that we are each supporting and also add in paraprofessionals, um, to make sure that they are being fully evaluated as well and looking at, um, then the needs within the building in terms of how we're supporting paraprofessionals and how we're using them. Um, as you know, it is an area, uh, that is hard to to find staff for. Um, and also an area where they are the most needed people within the building uh, in terms of their support to students and to teachers. So figuring out that balance of what is really working for us um, and areas where we might need a little bit more support. And I'll speak to that in a little bit as well, um, in terms of some of the evaluation and data that we're collecting around that area. So I tried to compare last year's numbers up until January with this year so we could look at what it looks like and what is different. I'm happy to report that our, uh, number of referrals is down, um, about ten referrals from the previous year. I really think that a huge reason is our SRBI process and the team meetings and the opportunity to collaborate around students, um, being being able to have those with fidelity every couple of weeks, um, to check in on what's happening in that process. Um, we also have a a smaller number of parent referrals this year. It's still a large number of referrals from parents, but if you look, um, with the fifteen that we've had so far this year, only four went forward to evaluation. Now, a few of those may have gone to 504, a few of those may have remained in that SRBI process. Um, and then the school referrals this year, so far, we've had six coming from the school, um, from the school teams and five of those went to evaluation. The eligibility piece has to be the criteria under IDEA for the category that we're looking at for a student. Um, and then also the other big piece is building independence for students. So how is it that the student's disability is impacting them in the classroom? Do they need direct sport support from a special education teacher? Or they do, they need more of an accommodation plan, which is kind of the, um, the process between special ed and 504, which into our next slide really explains the difference, um, of the two areas. So with special education, you have to have a documented disability, uh, under the, under IDEA. It must affect educational performance and or the ability to learn or benefit from general education curriculum. And you have to require specialized instruction to make progress in school. Under 504, you do have to have a documented disability, but your disability must interfere with the ability to learn in the general education classroom setting and must substantially substantially limit one or more basic life functions. So you could potentially be under 504 or special education. But if you require the additional supports of that direct service in a particular skill area, that's where we'd be looking at special education instead of 504. In addition, on the next slide, you'll see, um, the direct service component could be a part of 504. It's not a requirement under 504. There are a few students who will receive related services under 504. That is typically the exception and not the rule. So for example, a student may have counseling support, uh, as documented under their 504 uh, that they receive. You can also receive counseling support as a general ed student. So it's not a requirement per se in order for your 504 to be successful. Whereas a related service under special education means that you need speech OT, PT, counseling in order to access your general education environment. So your related service always supports the special education service. Um, the the other difference is a special education, you're required to have annual reviews every year and a three-year reevaluation period. Uh, in 504, we do a great job and many thanks to Mr. Sapias as he kind of spearheads 504. We, there is not a requirement to redo a 504 every year or to renew it, but we do a really nice job of looking at the plans and seeing what updates need to be made. Are there any accommodations that need to be taken off? Or does a student currently need that level of service anymore? So the process for identifying students for special education starts with a referral. So the parents can refer, uh, as their student based on concerns either at home or school. A teacher can do the same thing. And an SRBI team can refer based on the completion of, um, the SRBI cycles and or the student's response to the intervention. So when a referral is made, a timeline is started. And that timeline is forty five school days. So at the start of it, the first meeting, the PPT one, um, is where we would meet and look at the data as a team. We try to do that within the first ten days of the referral. We'd look at the data that comes from the school, concerns from the family, if there's any outside, um, information from either a doctor or a therapist or, um, any outside evaluations that were completed. And we would look at that information and decide as a team if an evaluation was necessary. The re, the piece that we'd look at is, do we suspect that the student has a disability? And if that is yes, then we would move forward to an evaluation. If we say no, then several things could happen. The process could be complete at that time. Um, a student could return to gen ed or SRBI, um, process if we were in, if we decided we weren't quite ready to move forward to an evaluation. Um, or there could be a referral to a 504 team. So an example would be a student comes with a diagnosis from a doctor of ADD, ADHD with some sort of accommodation needs such as extra time or, um, breaks within a longer task, some sort of movement break. Those kind of activities are accommodations and could be supported under a 504 and would not necessarily rise to the level of, um, needing special education supports. The next is what happens when students are identified, uh, is you would, we would complete the evaluation process and we would have PPT two. So we would review all the evaluations, um, have eligibility discussions, so either reviewing checklists or the requirements for certain disability categories. If the student was determined to be eligible at that meeting, we'd review goals and objectives that would be presented by the school team. Um, and then also make sure that if there were additional things that the parents had that hadn't been addressed that we can figure out if those would be additional accommodations or if we needed to look at other goals and objectives in that area. And then lastly, we would talk about, um, the accommodations and the service delivery from a special education teacher and or a related service provider. Um, that's where we would talk about how many hours a week a student requires support from a special education teacher or, um, you know, what accommodations need to be on the plan. And a big piece of that is where the general ed teacher who knows the student and or the SRBI team who knows the student are really helpful in determining what accommodations will help the student to be successful, um, in their general ed classroom environment. We also have to have, once you're eligible, an annual review where we look at, um, information, any progress monitoring that was completed, um, a review of current performance and make new goals for the next year. So everyone has at least one meeting a year. And then triennial evaluations, uh, every three years at a minimum, you have to reestablish eligibility for special education. Services are then delivered in several different ways. It really is dependent on what the student requires. We have push-in supports where our staff members will go into the regular ed classroom and we will support students there. Um, we have pull-out supports, so you may have individual or small group instruction in a resource room type setting. We have some direct teaching, students who are in need of a more ABA style approach or, um, more discreet trial. We have some, um, paraprofessionals and also staff members who do a lot more of uh, the repetition during the day. Co-treatment is done on occasion and that would be when you have either two related service providers or a special education teacher and related service provider who are working with a group of students simultaneously to both meet like the speech and language goals and maybe the writing work that's being done. So there there are sometimes are the co-treatment and then, um, self-contained supports. While we don't have a quote unquote self-contained program, we do have a number of students who spend more time during their day in a location separate from their typical peers. This could be due to, um, behavioral needs. It could be due to academic needs. It could be due to individual, um, personal or medical needs that, uh, student may need those supports. So one thing that we have focused on, um, and I will speak to it about one of those programs, uh, is the need to make sure that students are still accessing as much of the general education content as possible, even when they are in a self-contained room and what that looks like. So our current programs, we have the life skills program. So this one in our building is probably the closest to a self-contained model. Um, students are working on the academics and independence, um, as well as daily living skills. Uh, and this is where we've brought in a new curriculum this year that we're starting to use with our speech pathologist and also in the classroom setting. It's called Unique Learning Systems. I did at the end of the presentation have a link to it. If you're interested in looking at it, it has some amazing, um, support. If you're interested in looking at it, it has some amazing supports to help increase student independence and decrease some of the adult supports. It aligns with the alternative standards. So students who may be taking the alternative assessment, but still bases a lot of the work on grade band units such as from the Common Core. So a student who is maybe in third grade and they're studying plants. You could go in and find lessons related around plants, but at a readability level that might be on a kindergarten level. If the student need that, or it could have picture cues. And one of the pictures at the end of the presentation does have an example of kind of the picture and words and what that looks like. The social emotional learning program is a resource room and also offers an alternative location to the general education setting. Students are working on the self-regulation and coping strategies. There are skill building units. And of course, there are students who participate in skill building or other counseling supports that are not part of the social emotional learning group. But they, but, but in particular, this group of students does receive more time in working on some of those skills as part of their educational program. And they're using a program called Everyday Speech that has just some really great full class type lessons. I know we're even doing it. We're using Everyday Speech even in the general education settings as some kind of proactive approach to behavior. And then social thinking is another curriculum that some of our providers are using. And then the academic support or related services is typically conducted through the resource room. It may be some push-in services depending on what the student requires at that time. This is where we would do some of that structured literacy programming, math support, reading comprehension, executive functioning. Or you may receive your OTPT, speech and language, or social skills. So one thing that I'm very passionate about is independence and there is an article that I've attached about paraprofessionals and their role in special education. And I feel strongly that it's so important to start now on building that independent skill for kids. If you are carrying a backpack down the hall, a student should be learning to carry a backpack in elementary school. If you are trying a new task and it's really hard and there's struggle, it's okay to struggle and it's okay to see that sometimes you aren't successful and you can learn from that. So how do you de-escalate, de-escalate or cope when you're stuck in something? We have to teach those skills, so not just doing for. And that's an area that we started the year talking to paraprofessionals about. And something that we're still continuing to talk or we'll see something and say, hey, let them try it first. Or I love how you let them process through that. And it's okay that they were having a hard moment. You let them handle it and get there when they were ready. So paraprofessionals is definitely one area that I personally feel very strongly about. And then we also are collecting a lot of data this year. The administrative team is wonderful and is really helping throughout the day when they go into classrooms. Not only are they looking at what the students are doing and what the teachers are doing. They're also seeing what paraprofessionals are doing. Are they engaged with a student on something? Are they kind of just waiting to see if the student needs help? What is their day-to-day activity look like and parts of the day? We also are trying to make sure that we're utilizing staff at the most appropriate times during the day and building that independence whenever we can. The other piece is the life skills program. So again, that building the independence piece. A lot of life skill programs tend to focus on students having a lot more one-to-one support. But the reality is, is when students get to high school or even life beyond, life beyond high school, there is very little one-on-one availability from adults. Especially in the world of adult services, you really need to be able to work independently for a short amount of time or access things requesting help when needed. Participate with your peers, being able to have conversation and spend longer amounts of time in a classroom or in a non-preferred setting. So really working on those skills as well as academics is so critical at the elementary level. The other piece that we're going to start looking at a little bit is student participation and where is participation most appropriate for a student? So a lot of our students in the life skills program may start their day or attend parts of the morning meeting time within their classroom. So they're still part of that classroom community. They may attend PE and art and music with their class because it's also another time where things can be modified appropriately for what their needs are. But there are times where sometimes the academic, especially as students get older, is a lot harder to adjust to a completely different level. And that's where we pull in some other information from Unique Learning Systems and/or other, you know, structured literacy alternatives in order to help students continue to make progress. While they may not be making progress on the same standards that their typical peers are. And so another piece that we're going to be doing with that are the classroom teachers and the speech pathologist. We're going to be visiting some other life skill programs, both within AMITD and then also in some other local districts to see what their programs look like and how we can restructure some of ours to really build that independence for students. On the last two slides are pictures of kind of what things look like in action. So on the left and in the middle picture are our speech pathologist and one of our classroom teachers working on some of that Unique Learning Systems curriculum. You can see that it has visuals paired with words. It will read it to you. There are work pages that students can do. It also connects to their iPads. So you can do pre and post-assessments to really get a lot of data on where students are in the process. And you can do three different readability levels. So you can do full paragraphs, sentences with photos and just photos of words if that's the level the student is on. But you can still do the activity together with it already pre-leveled. The other picture is of our speech pathologist and one of our special education teachers collaborating around some student needs. And then on the last page, there's some of our pre-K friends building their independence, coming in and washing their hands. They knew exactly where to go and what to do. And another one of our friends working on some of the structured literacy program with her special education teacher. So working through her letter sound identification. And I think that's it. I did also attach, I believe you received a a sample of what the parent newsletter looks like for the month of January. And then a student work sample who I think you already received it, but we're incredibly proud of him. And his writing assignment, just such an amazing job. And then a few other resources and the article about paraprofessionals. So questions? If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer whatever you have.
Thanks, Carrie. Appreciate all of that information. Board members, any questions for Carrie this evening? Stephen?
Yeah, it's more of a comment. I mean, that was comprehensive and wonderful. Thank you so much. And I have to say, I particularly appreciated the example you provided about the graphic organizer. You know, because something we talk about in say, the world of philanthropy where I am is the curb cut effect. Which is how accommodations that were designed to support people with disabilities actually benefit the population broadly. And I think particularly when we're raising young people who will grow up into society where one in four Americans experiences some form of disability, whether apparent, non-apparent, physical, cognitive. You know, it is the fact that students are able to be supported in the way they need to be supported, but also engaging with their typical peers. It's a learning for everyone and a benefit for everyone that the system is set up the way, the way it is. So I just want to say fantastic work and really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. I really can't take credit for all the work though. I have to give credit to the amazing staff members and special education team in the building. I mean, it is, it is a pleasure to work with my colleagues and they just do a phenomenal job.
Thanks, Carrie. Anyone else from the board? Question or comment? Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks for that presentation. That was very comprehensive and very informative and, and impressive everything that you and the rest of the staff are, are doing to support our students. I had a question about capacity and your assessment of where we're at in that regard. In particular, I'm wondering about where we stand relative to any recommended staffing ratios, say for the number of students we have versus staff. And then also thinking about, I saw your slide on how you're divvying up support for staff. Wondering while we have some additional staff now, you've also added paraprofessionals to the supervision. And so that changes, that changes our capacity a bit. And so I'm just wondering if you could speak to that on, on what your assessment is of, you know, how well-staffed we are to meet the demands we have.
Sure. I mean, I can't, I would have to get you very specific numbers. I can't necessarily go into some of the programs because I don't want to identify students, but what I can say is compared to some surrounding districts, we are, we are staffed with quite a low student to teacher ratio in special education. We are down about 10 students from last year at this time. Some of that is because students have exited or gone to a 504 plan where they're really just needing accommodations and not the direct service from a teacher. So that does change things a little bit. Our typical resource teacher has somewhere between 12 to 16 students on a caseload. In most elementary world, that number, I'd have to grab it, but I think it's more like 15 to 18 in, in many elementary schools. Are more of our life skill program, they're averaging about six to seven students and a typical more self-contained or life skill SEL programs, probably closer to 10, 10 students per case manager. I, I will say that we, one area we are looking at still is speech and language. Especially as we look at more literacy, we need to look at how that language component pulls into that. And through the SRBI process, are students receiving any language intervention that they need ahead of getting to special education? So that is one area where we may come to a point where we need additional. Right now, we're at two and a half speech and language pathologists. We may need three at some point. But we're doing okay right now. And we are adding some additional time for OT based on student need for next year. That's going to be an additional, I can't write, it's either six or six hours, I think, a week that we're going to add additional time. That, that'll be picked up by an agency. So I actually feel really good with our teaching staff numbers. Paraprofessional staff, right now we are still hiring and we do have some openings, but students are getting the service that's required in their IEPs. The resource rooms in our district all have a, have staff members assigned to them that can be used for students, or sometimes they do some small groups within the resource. That's pretty uncommon in most elementary programs to, to even have that kind of support. So I'm thrilled that we're able to maintain that. And we have a really stellar and just really high level of paraprofessional support in terms of the people who are working in the building. I'm very confident in the, in the programming that they support students with and their ability to support either behavior happening in class or support the general education teacher with pulling some small groups, sometimes even with general ed students in some of those groups in order to support student needs. So, you know, from the angle of do we have openings? Yes. But that was also why we felt comfortable saying with looking at some of the program needs in terms of building that independence, because especially the life skill group of students. I'm, I'm, that's my background and I'm very passionate about the independence piece because I know what life outcomes are going to look like. Which it sounds really far away, but high school gets here much faster than you think. And if students aren't able to be independent for a significant amount of time, employment opportunities really dissipate. And even some of like opportunities for some sort of assisted living environments really change. So making sure that we're focusing on those, those types of skills too, that you wouldn't typically think about when you think about learning to read or write in an elementary set, setting. It's never too late to start working on some of those. So that's another reason we're going to look at some of the other program models that they're using in some other districts to really look at, how can we reduce from students needing a one-to-one all day long? Because unless you're being fed at lunchtime or you are needing hand-over-hand assistance in like an art class, you really don't need all day another adult on top of you. And, and you're not given the opportunity to be independent or show us what independence you have. So I'm thrilled that we're able to, to take this opportunity to, to kind of look at that and, and have our teachers go look at some of the other programming. But right now, based on also, I think because our numbers are also down a little bit from last year, I'm very confident with the numbers that we're currently projected to have. And with our referrals also down, I think we're making the right referrals to special education. The majority of our referrals that are going forward to testing are becoming eligible. So again, we're making referrals that are sound or we're coming back together more data, not just going right to a big assessment when a student may not require that.
Okay, thank, thank you. And how, and how about the supervision demand? So it does, again, it does look like you have for the admin, it looks like you're supervising way more individuals than, than last year, even though some of them are, a lot of them now are, you know, paraprofessionals versus teachers. I just wanted to check in on, on that workload and, and how that's, how that's feeling among the admin.
Well, I can say that at least when we've had conversations and I would be happy to let the others chime in if they have, have thoughts on this. At least in, in reducing some of the number of teacher evaluations, getting into classrooms, writing up the evaluations, having all those meetings, it does give us an opportunity during the day to deal with other student issues that might come up that, that we are not always planned for as they need to be addressed in the moment. The paraprofessional group, it's my understanding they've not had evaluations in a number of years. And that is important. Everyone should have feedback on their performance and their job. And that is an important piece that we needed to make sure we were able to get to. Because I'm in more special education classrooms, that's why I took on more paraprofessional oversight. Although depending on what grade level, some of it was split up by grade level. So I know Jimmy has upper grades. So any pairs that were assigned in those grade levels, he has taken on supervision for. The other piece with that is that the supervision for a paraprofessional falls under a different type of a different type of supervision. So it's not all of the observations and write-ups. It's a, it's a more standardized form that we're using with our paraprofessional, our administrative assistant and our custodial group. All are using the same evaluative form about job performance. And we made sure to align those, but I, my feeling is that it's really important that everyone gets some feedback and it is something we had to add back in. It just allows us to do it in a way that feels more comfortable to get it all done and still be able to support students with whatever needs are coming up within the school day.
And so, so the time demand for supervising pairs is just lower than significantly lower than what it is for teachers is what it sounds like. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mike. Lauren?
Thank you from the newbie for such a great presentation. I was really, really pleased to see some of those supervision numbers and, and what that looks like, especially adding an assistant principal, particularly with special ed expertise coming in. That's really the gold, the gold standard, especially for, for elementary schools. So pleased to see that it's lowered some supervision load and helped you to give teachers regular, regular feedback and support them more in the classroom. That sounds like a big win for, based on what was past practice with, with the structure shifting this year. for, based on what was past practice with, with the structure shifting this year. And I'm sure it'll start to improve as you, as you develop that workflow a little bit. My question is just a little bit, you've referenced several programs and, and materials that you're using. Are there processes or ways, now that you're working in this new dynamic, that you're going to implement some kind of curriculum review and renewal and taking a look at those and how they support special education, but also how they, oh, something is happening on my phone. Sorry. How they, how those programs integrate into the general ed classroom, how effective they are across, across the board for special education students. There, there were a lot, a lot listed there. I'm not familiar with all of them. So I just was thinking about that as far as embedding those within the curriculum as students move, move through their, their program.
Sure. You know, like any curriculum, I think, I think you always have to be looking at what the trends are and kind of what area of need a student has. So you know, right now, really looking at that as dyslexia is becoming more prevalent and more people know what to look for. And we're using Hegarty in the lower grades. We also have started using Hegarty in our pre-K program and it's been amazing. Our teacher was like, can we try this? And yes, of course. And she's seen great results with that. So making sure we're trying to tie in early as we can. Some of the programs are really based around, a number of them were Lynda Mudd Bell and are based sort of around a specific need. So one was a comprehension program, one is a math program. So again, it's going to kind of tailor to what the specific disability of the student is and, and how we can support that student. But of course, we're always looking like right now, we're using one of our structured literacy approaches is a program called Sunde. We're, we're looking at some other options moving forward. So we also have some students that are doing Wilson. We have some students that are working through an Orton Gillingham approach. But it, it kind of depends on where the student is and what grade level. But yes, I mean, we're trying to, we always try to use also anything happening in the grade level to support that work. So I know, for example, there's a group of our fifth grade students who are getting reading comprehension, but they're using similar work from the novels being written in their regular ed classroom. So they're able to do that work with their class. And then when they go get their support, they can dive in a little bit deeper to like, where do I find, you know, that in, where is that inferred in this? What is an inference? How do I pull that piece out? So you know, of course, we're always looking at other ways to kind of revamp and, and based on the literacy piece and looking at the science of reading and the new pieces we have to do with that, a big area that we're looking at and that teachers have said they want more information on is more of that literacy component. So I think that'll be our next kind of charge.
Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome.
Erin?
Hi. So I just wanted to follow up on what Mike was asking about in terms of capacity, but take it from the angle of the, the physical building. And, and you know, I know that when we've toured the building, I remember seeing some, some, what I seem to appear to be some spatial issues around our capacity. And so I'm just wondering if you can talk a little bit about whether you have the physical space to provide the services you feel you need to provide and what you may not have that need, you need as we think about the physical space of the building and our capacity.
Sure. It's a tight space, I think, for everyone, for both gen ed and special ed. On occasion, some special ed requires more equipment if it's a student with physical, more physical needs. So not only is it having the equipment, it's also storing the equipment and having it in a space you can access it easily. So we have to get creative sometimes about how that works. We right now have teachers sharing classrooms. So they try to see kids in groups when they can and/or they're pushing in when another group is having their class, but it's, you know, sharing, they, they are sharing a classroom space and holding small groups. We it is a big school. So there are some students for whom, even if we had all the space available, there are some students where just the pure size of the school itself is too much for what a student might need. And there are some students who might require an out of district placement based on, on that piece of it. Or what we can provide within the school. But yes, we could use some more space. I'd love if we had room to have, you know, our OTs in kind of a common area. And so giving her some room that is not, she could to have some more sensory, we've been talking a lot about building a sensory space and how could we do that without having an actual room? What can we do to get creative to have a calming location? We also have some other providers that come into the building during the day. So like our teacher of the hearing impaired, teacher of the visually impaired come into the building during the week and sometimes they use a rotunda or they use somebody's office space. So you know, having some other spaces like that would be fantastic. When we're testing, we kind of use each other's office space and block off. But yeah, I mean, spaces with the potential of the numbers growing, we will definitely outgrow the amount of space that's needed for some of the smaller group instruction. We're doing the best we can with what we have, but it's, it's, you're not wrong. It's tight.
No, thank you. It was a great presentation. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Board members? Well, then Carrie, I'll thank you for your time this evening for the great informative presentation. And board members, thank you for your great questions about capacity and both space-wise and, and personnel.
Thank you. And, and thank you for solving my tech issues, Marsha. I appreciate it.
We all work together, Carrie. Sometimes takes a village to do these things. Okay, moving on to Beecher Road School update. Ms. Sherman, hi.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm actually going to be joined by both Jimmy and Cheryl in just a second for this update because they each have some pieces to share as well. I am going to start by sharing that I had a wonderful opportunity to spend some time with a first grade friend who won the Halloween Hoot Auction Principal for a Day. Her and I got to do morning announcements and do a building walkthrough. We met with the nurse about outdoor recess temperatures and sent an email to the faculty about that. And we also did some classroom visits and she got to write some notes. It was great fun. And I'm actually looking forward to doing another one tomorrow with a kindergarten friend. So I'm very excited and very grateful to the PTO for continuing to host the Hoot and organize the auction and, you know, contribute to our school community. In other news, we are working really hard on our literacy curriculum. As you all know, that our waiver was not approved. So we have been working really diligently and by we, I mean, the literacy team. They have been working very hard at reviewing all of the state-approved resources. There are nine in total that are approved as a full resource. And then there are several more that are approved as a compendium of resources. So they've been sort of digging through some of those resources as an initial look-through. And then we have a wonderful team of teachers who are going to come together to dig into that material even more and look very critically at the materials and do some work around using a rubric and using specific protocols in order to review some different resources before we continue our work moving forward. We also had an opportunity. There are other schools that are at different places. I mean, the wonderful thing about something like this coming around in the state is that it gives educators opportunities to connect across districts. So we actually had a visit to Killingworth Elementary School. They're a little further along in their journey and they're using one of the programs that's approved as a compendium of resources. So we took a little drive to Killingworth and spent some time there. And we were very grateful to their community for inviting us in and sort of letting us see some work in action. So this work is well underway and going to continue. And I look forward to sharing some more updates about that as we continue to dive into this work. I'm going to turn it over to Jimmy. Jimmy, you ready? You're up next. And then Cheryl's going to share something as well.
I am ready. Thank you so much, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. So I just wanted to touch a little bit about Dare. And so one of the things that I've been doing is I've been working closely with Ariane Buzzard, our PE and our health teacher in conjunction with Officer Lynch. So Dare is going to look a little bit different this year. You know, there are still the targeted health standards that are being addressed by Ariane in conjunction with Officer Lynch. And you know, they're dealing with different types of pressures in adolescents, you know, alcohol and drug addiction, importance of self-worth, communication and refusal skills. And so they're really, we're working together to collaborate, look like, look at, excuse me, what that's going to look like in the classroom. So we've already started that process. And also to another kind of piece to this is sort of looking ahead to the end of the year. Traditionally with Dare, you know, we did have that assembly. And this year, we're, we're really looking to, you know, really get some student choice and voice included into like that process and student agency. So Ariane, Vinnie and I are working closely with the sixth grade team of teachers too. And you know, what that sort of culminating activity will look like is, is to be determined. But again, the whole premise and our thinking is really involving, you know, the student voice in the choice in that process. And I was actually just texting with Officer Lynch and he's already, we were thinking of having a day-long celebration. He's already confirmed the bomb squad is going to be attending. He's working with Woodbridge PD to try to get the, the police dog to come back. So all those pieces are, are, are moving in the positive direction. And so, you know, we're really looking forward to to that collaboration for the sixth grade students as well as our end of the year culminating activity. Cheryl?
All right. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Carrie, great job on that presentation. So thank you for that. Lots of hard work. How about, I wanted to share a little bit about Pick My Kid. So Pick My Kid is our dismissal app that we are moving, that we have moved towards using as our primary way of dismissal. So we are really looking to have 100% of our families be involved in this because this is how our teachers are going to be dismissing students. And I can say that as of today, we are at 89% of our families have signed up for the app. So we actually are only, we're, I'm working, I get a 94 more families to go through and sign up for the app. And so this has really been, it has streamlined our dismissal process down in our car pickup line. You know, without having to use walkies back and forth, we're able to use our, our, you know, iPads and we've got several teachers, excuse me, who are in the South Assembly who are dismissing students. It is going much more smoothly. It's been fantastic. Just as a reminder, parents can make changes in the app until 1:50 each day. And then after that, any, any changes would need to be called into the front office. Once a parent calls into the front office, our front secretaries and office staff are able to make the change in the system and let the teachers know. Our, all of our teachers are checking it at the end, either right before they take their kids to special at two o'clock or right before dismissal. We're able to get everyone's dismissal plans there. And when we have substitutes, I've worked with our front office staff and we're now printing out a hard copy of each classroom's dismissal plan for the substitute so that they have it at the end of the day, so that they have an accurate update of where the students are going. So the one reminder we're going to share out in the principal's update is that our teachers are going to be using that as the primary way of dismissal. So parents do in fact need to update what their child's dismissal plan is. The automatic default is set to a bust dismissal. And so any other changes need to be made directly in the app. The great thing about it is that parents can set it up as a recurring, as a recurring dismissal plan, and they can make changes again, daily as needed up until 1:50 on their own, just need to call in. So just a huge thank you to our Beecher Road community because 89% is, is really fantastic. I mean, I'm so proud of all of you who have definitely come in, stepped up, downloaded it and started using it. So any other questions, please feel free to call the front office, but thank you so much. And Pick My Kid is really, it, it's really moving forward and doing, doing great things for our dismissal.
Thanks, Cheryl. I thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Cheryl. Board members, any questions for any of our three wonderful administrators on the things that they spoke about this evening in their reports? I, I want to just give a little shout out to Officer Lynch, who has really stepped up to the plate in terms of his involvement in Beecher Road School in a, in a similar but different capacity. No longer as a uniformed police officer of a department. He has, he has just taken his new responsibilities as, as our school security officer and is just hitting it out of the park from my perspective. And so a little shout out to him for the great work that he's been doing and the collaboration with the frontline administrators and the teachers has been really remarkable. And so I, I thank him for that. Lisa, did you want to jump in?
I, I want to just piggyback on that and say that with Officer Lynch shifting into his new role, I will say the Woodbridge Police Department and the Woodbridge Fire Department have done a really amazing job of maintaining a really close relationship with the school. Two officers actually met with us just last week to talk about some of our drills and safety protocols. We have another officer that attends our safety and security meeting. The fire department has been very supportive. So it's, it's been a really wonderful testament to the community that we have and the way that we all support each other and you know, work together to keep our students and our staff safe. So I need to throw that out there too. We're very grateful.
Yeah, thanks, Lisa, for adding that on because it really is a collaborative effort in keeping the, all of the people, students and staff and the parents who are at the school safe at all times. And so thanks for jumping in with that, Lisa. Appreciate it. Any other board comments? Then I think.
I just, that, that, Lynn, I just have one, one question. Since we're talking about Darren, Officer Lynch, I also I'm also ungrateful that he's been able to stay on and to take on this role, especially given that he had the experience of of a Dare, of running the Dare program at, at Beecher for so long. So it's great that he's still around to be able to teach similar kinds of lessons to our, to our kids. I know it's not an official Dare, it's not a Dare program because he can no longer teach that since he's not on the force, but he's retired from the force. But I'm, I'm, I'm wondering how, how similar or different is this new approach that he's using with students? And so is it, is it still a Dare-like program? Or is it more of a deviation from that? And, and also it would be great at some point, maybe as we had Officer Lynch come to the curriculum committee, I believe it was last year and talk about, or the year before, I don't remember exactly when. But one, we had him come and talk about the Dare program. And so at some point, it would be good to, I think, to hear from him again, either at the curriculum committee or in the, the larger board meeting. And, and because just for us to become more knowledgeable about that, but also I'm just thinking about down the road, for us to have some kind of documentation ourselves that might be able to be passed on some kind of curriculum, if there is a curriculum he's using that can be, or developing, that can be passed on to a new security staff member down the line. So I'm just, so I, I'm just wondering, can you just say, speak to that a little bit, Jimmy, of how similar or different it is to, to Dare? And what opportunities there might be down the line for us to learn a little bit more about this new approach?
You know, I think I'll start with the latter. I think, you know, we have to kind of look at what types of opportunities that we can kind of plan for in terms of down the road. You know, with regards to the content. You know, with regards to the content, you know, that's being taught, what Ariane did, and shout out to, you know, Ariane Buzzard, like I said, our PE, health teacher. A lot of the topics that are integrated into the health standards were very similar to the topics that, you know, Officer Lynch would teach while he was doing the specific Dare program. You know, again, going back to sort of what I referenced before, you know, like the pressures of adolescence, the alcohol and the drug addiction, the different types of drug classifications, the dangers of prescription drugs, the self-worth, the importance of that, you know, the communication, the bullying, a lot of the same messaging is weaved into those health standards. So I think that's, you know, that opportunity that both of them are going to be able to have to collaborate is really going to, really be able to create an opportunity for the kids to engage deeply into those standards.
I think we were also joking a little bit that he's not a, you know, he's a retired police officer. So he's not a certified Dare teacher anymore, but he still has all the same content knowledge that he had a year ago. So it's, it is like Jimmy said, opening up a really great opportunity for him to really collaborate with Ariane and make sure that what he taught previously in his Dare programming is definitely being touched upon in the health curriculum. And like Jimmy said, it's, the standards are very closely aligned. It's just, it's just them collaborating and doing a lot of that teaching together, which has been really powerful. And I think that as we flesh it out more, we, it definitely, we can definitely have an opportunity to share some of that with the curriculum committee or the full board, you know. It's, so it's kind of Beechers' version of Dare, but it's, it's, he has all the same content knowledge that he did a year ago when he was a police officer and a certified Dare teacher.
Thank you Lisa, thank you Jimmy. You all set, Mike?
Yep.
Okay, Aaron, I saw your hand up still. Yep.
Yeah, I was just wondering Lisa, if we're, if we are also taking this opportunity to look at some of the evidence-based programs that exist around. I mean, there's a lot that has been developed that is now evidence-based. It's been proven to be effective. And so instead of kind of developing our own and hodgepodgeing it together, I guess, and I'm not saying that it wouldn't be good content, but it seems like if we have something that's already been proven to be effective, it might be something we want to look to just adopting one of those into our, our model for teaching this. Because I do think one of the things that the, the evaluation of the original Dare program taught us was that this can go really wrong, you know, like the original Dare program, I believe that the original research actually showed that it increased drug use. So there are, there are ways to mess this up. And so I just wondered if you, if there had been any talk or thought about just adopting one of the evidence-based programming that has been developed, because there's so many of them now.
Thank you for asking, Aaron. Yeah, we can certainly look into that. We can certainly look into that for future.
Yeah, that, that was also behind some of my questioning as well, the thinking about the original Dare evaluation, which, you know, that program that was evaluated, just to be clear, was different from what Officer Lynch was implementing. Dare reworked that program after that original study that found that it was actually producing harmful effects. It was actually teaching kids how to better engage more secretively in drug use. And, and so, so I think Aaron is right. Aaron raised a really good point. And it was something I was thinking about as well, that, you know, there, there are ways in which this, despite the best of intentions, can go wrong. And so I think it, it is worth taking that into consideration. And it's also worth, you know, potentially considering some of these other evidence-based approaches.
Jay, did you have a question?
I think Aaron stole my thunder, exactly the same question. What are the alternatives? And are we looking at the alternatives? I think what Mike just said was very important. I think Officer Lynch, Vinnie has done an excellent job with the Dare program. He's revamped it. He's worked very well with it. Historically, I've had an older son go through it. It was an excellent program. And I think Jimmy taking on board and adding the health side of this and working together with Ms. Buzzard is an excellent opportunity. But I think this is also a great time to look at alternatives, to see how we compare to other programs. And I do like the idea of the evidence-based research. I think that's important to look at also.
Thanks Jay. Okay, so I'm sure that the administration has taken some note of board commentary and will get back to us with some information or perhaps a update at the curriculum committee meeting, which is coming up. I don't, that's pretty soon, but maybe the next one, maybe the next one. The next curriculum committee meeting is February 1st, so. So we'll look forward to moving, getting some, maybe some additional information on that. Thanks. Moving on to the BRS Building Committee update, that's you Jeff.
No official meeting, just happy to report the project is moving forward. So we'll continue monitoring it and pushing it forward. And it's going to be a great day when shovels are in the ground and guys are up on the roof, so that can't come soon enough.
So we did have our special meeting. You want to just give the update on that Jeff?
Yes, the town meeting?
Yeah.
Yes. So we had 30 free attendance there for the evening. So it passed that evening through the Board of Finance and Selectment. Some good comments were made, how we should be keeping an eye on Beecher and still making it the crown jewel that it is. So there's support from the community. But overall, everything is going in the right direction and looking forward to getting this project started.
That's great. Well, and we'll stick with you and go on to the Facilities Committee update.
Yes, great. Thank you. The Facility Committee met on January 4th. Vito gave an excellent report, a great variety of fixes he's been doing, from outdoor electrical lights to our walk-in cooler, to card reader upgrades, playground fixes, wings repairs. It's just to highlight the variety of work that the Facilities Team does is quite amazing. So things are in the right direction there. And then on January 11th, we had a working meeting to go over the air quality report. And as expected, our top-tier system is performing as it should. Everything, great news to report out. Just wanted to note, it was noted a few times how the system is being properly maintained, which is a big win for our school. And then an official report should be coming out shortly, but all good news from the air quality assessment. And it was also noted how our leadership got an intelligent start on it because a limited number of consultants who can do this in the industry is going to play a factor down the road. So all good news from our air quality report.
Thanks Jeff. Any questions on Facilities? Okay, moving on to Finance, Stephen?
All right. Well, the report is good and of course with all due credit to Donna. The fiscal year is actually 50% complete at this point. And our total projected savings across all categories are estimated at $295,000. Now, this is down from $340,000 in December, primarily due to other professional services, which I'll discuss in a moment. But just to give you the quick rundown, which I do every month, we have salary savings of approximately $155,000 at this point due to teacher turnover, that halftime psychologist that Carrie mentioned that we, we've not yet been able to fill. We're also down three paras. But of course, this does include, the, does include Officer Lynch. On the payroll, interestingly and important to note is that this projected savings does also reflect the hiring of the two new sixth grade teachers. So that isn't, that is reflected in the estimate. 200 series benefits are currently on track, although we'll likely end up with a surplus in this category due to the unfilled paraprofessional positions. For the 300 series purchased professional services, we have $122,000 savings due to the SRO model. However, this savings would be higher, but for the increased cost of long-term substitutes due to staff vacancies. 400 series purchased property services, we currently have a projected savings of $8,000 overall. We've needed to purchase some windows. There's a copier leasing that were unexpected costs. But at this point, one of the savings we have is, you know, an estimated $25,000 savings due to the pool filters not running while the pool remain, remains empty. However, the town may have a plan for filling the cracks, so we have to wait and see. So we may not quite realize that full $25,000 savings. In the 700 series furniture and equipment, we're in the green by $37,000. This is unchanged from the, from the prior month. 800 series dues and fees are on track, 900 series miscellaneous expenses, which is primarily the Ezra nurses on track. Now, on the higher side of the ledger, for other purchased services, we were anticipating a small savings of about $3,000 overall in November and December due to lower costs for workman's comp and liability insurance. However, we have had, we've just signed a contract with ACES for additional outplaced tuition, which now places us about $55,000 over budget. So that's accounting for most of the differential in the overall savings from the prior month. And then finally, in the 600 series, consistent with last month, we're estimating about $2,000 in overages due to testing supplies that were needed. So that's the overall summary on the report, Donna. I don't know if there's anything you would want to add?
No, I don't really have anything to add, other than, you know, we may, you know, something like the technology that we've had as the savings all year long, because we were able to pre-purchase this year's items with last year's surplus. I'm sure we will want to use that by year end and not, you know, I think the technology team will come forward with suggestions on how we can best use that this year. And, um, let's see, that's all I can think of. But, oh yeah, and then so obviously if we are able to, to move forward with, with CSG, you know, this, that, that $20,000 or $18,000, $19,000 would come out of this surplus as well.
Thank you Donna, thank you Stephen. Any questions on the Finance Committee report? Okay, moving on to Policy, we have.
Oh, I think Lynn, I think Jay has a question.
Jay, go ahead.
Very quickly Lynn, really just the major point here is that the staff savings that you're seeing over 200,000 are primarily, I think, driven by the turnover. So we had two teachers that resigned. We had no teachers in place for, what, three months? And we've still got one starting this month. I think Lisa sent a note out. So we've had substitutes in that place, so it's really not a saving when I think about this. I think about this as, yes, it's a dollar saving, but we didn't have those teachers in place. And the teachers we're hiring now are at a lower level, I'm presuming, from what I've seen. So there's the saving. That saving's not going to accrue going forward. It's going to be built in. Now, the budget that we've got for next year had the existing teachers in, so there's already going to be a saving there for next year, I forecast. The other thing we've seen is, and I think Vonda is going to speak to this a little later, Lynn, we've seen two retirements of teachers who have been in the system for a long time. We're going to see some savings accrue going into next year. So again, we should, from what I'm seeing here, be at another surplus next year, given the turnover that we're seeing with retirements, incoming teachers. And so that does help our budget significantly going forward when I think about this. So that's the one point, that, you know, we've got to be careful with the staffing. We see this retirements. We're seeing new staff coming in that are at a lower level, so we're getting a saving that really does boost our operating budget. The second part is the SRO model. That'll disappear because the new budget has already factored that in. So next year, that goes away. So that, the only thing that we have to be a little careful about is when we think about the money, yes, we are saving $200,000. The question I ask is at what cost? There was a cost to that. We didn't have permanent teachers in place for those months. And we've now got new teachers in place. I'm glad to hear. It's great going back to some stability for those sixth graders and I think this is going to be good. But we've just got to understand that these turnovers will create some value going forward for us, to invest going forward. More appointment than a question.
Thanks Jay. Okay, moving on to Policy. Last month, we put two policies on 30-day review, Policy 9132 dot four Finance Committee, and Policy 3515 Operations Use of School Facilities. So tonight, we need to take action on those. So I will make the motion that we adopt Policy 9132 dot four as revised. Do I have a second to that motion?
I second.
Was that you Mike? Thank you, Mike Strambler. Motion made by Lynn Piazek, seconded by Mike Strambler. Any discussion? Okay, let's call for a vote. Stephen?
Yes.
Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous. And the next policy is 3515. I will move that we adopt Policy 3515 Operations Use of School Facilities as revised. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Jay, I saw your hand. Thank you. Motion made by Lynn Piazek, seconded by Jay Daya. Any discussion on Policy 3515? Call for a vote. Stephen?
Yes.
Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Jay? Yes, I see your thumbs up. Lauren?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous. Marsha, thank you. Board members, moving on to 3F on the agenda, Cable Liaison Report.
Do you want me to go?
Go, Sarah Beth.
Okay. So last week, several board members and I attended a legislative breakfast, which was very well-attended and a lot of conversation about some upcoming topics that are hot items right now. I know that we are in the process, I think we're going to talk about it, drafting a letter to state representatives for the upcoming session regarding the Right to Read policy and any amendments to that policy. Upcoming is a webinar on June 24th regarding the board's role in advocacy. It's an opportunity to talk about ideas for, just for advocacy efforts within our district. So if anyone's interested, that is on January 24th from 11 to 12:15, and it is a webinar. So you can register for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. So in Board Book, board members, you will find a letter that Aaron drafted, so with the help of Vonda, after a discussion that those who attended that legislative breakfast had. So Aaron, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So there was a lot of discussion of the reading mandates that have come. And there was a number of school districts that were in similar positions to ours, where they had very high test scores. Their waiver had been not, had not been accepted. And they now felt like they were in a position where they were going to have to expend significant money to solve a problem that they didn't really have. money to solve a problem that they didn't really have, or their test scores didn't show they have. And so I don't want to speak for the legislators in the room, but it does sound like some of, some of how it has been implemented, it has been, they did not foresee, including school districts with high test scores, then having to spend significant money on these only seven approved curriculums. And so one of the, between the conversation that took place at that morning meeting, and then some follow-up conversation that I had with Lynn, one of the suggestions that I made was that we could send a letter as a board, basically saying that we ask in the short session that they exclude districts such as ours that have high test scores that, that, you know, again, we're already, if, if the goal of the legislation was to make sure that all kids knew how to read, we're already filling that goal. Like, we, we don't need to buy to purchase one of the seven approved curriculums. Just to be super clear, it is not in any way saying that we do not support the science of reading. It is not in any way saying that we are not moving away from the science of reading. In fact, I would argue that Vonda and Lisa have spent significant time and energy and continue to spend significant time and energy. And I will say, this legislation probably even gave us more of a push to lean in to our work to make sure that our right, our reading curriculum follows the science of reading. The question is, do we need as a school district, is it our best use of resources to purchase one of these seven mandate curriculums, which I will just say, come not only with a hefty price tag to purchase outright, but there's an annualized price that goes along with this as well. And so my thought was that if we can, we can write this letter on behalf of, again, a bipartisan board that we have, that we work well to, send it to the education committee, and then also share this letter with other districts to see if they would be willing to emulate what we're doing. Because we do believe that the modification is pretty minimal. And it does seem like if, if we have enough momentum, there, there are certainly legislators that are willing to do this. As a reminder, it is a short session, which means only bills that are raised by the entire committee can be voted on. So if the entire committee does not agree to raise this bill, it won't get voted on, which is why we need to send it to all, all the members of this committee and not, we can't just target like Mary Wheelander, who I think would be, you know, supportive of this effort. She alone cannot raise a bill. She can only raise a bill during a long session. And so this is a short session. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to take any feedback on the letter. But I do think it's somewhat time sensitive because the session is going to open in the next couple of weeks. They will have to decide, again, we would ideally like to send this out, send it to other districts so that they replicate what we're doing, so we get momentum. Because they have to decide pretty early on in the session whether or not they're going to raise a bill like this, and then vote on it, and then get it through both chambers.
Right. So Erin, you know, took the bull by the horn. She and Vonda worked together and came up with this letter. At, you know, this all happened since Thursday, folks. So, so there really is a momentum on the part of those people who attended that session. And Erin is, is correct in saying, you know, we were able to speak with Mary Wheelander, who was there and whatever, but we need to reach out to the other committee members. So what I'm going to ask tonight is just for your agreement to have the, Marsha made that letter look nice and put it on our, some new letterhead. And so she has added all of the board members' names, but I'm just going to go and ask for consensus for an agreement for you to have your name added to this letter. So I'll start before we do that, asking if there's anyone who has questions of anyone. I do know that Vonda and other superintendents have been reaching out and speaking to legislators and to people in the State Department of Education. They've written letters, their voices are out there. And so I agree with Erin, our voice needs to be heard as well. So I don't know, Vonda, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think you've all captured it. Well, we continue to try to use our voice. We realize that the purpose of the bill is strong and valid and that the tail end of it was slid in through an implementer, which is never a good thing. And we're, we're working hard to try to get some leeway.
Great, thanks. Okay, any questions of Erin, Vonda, me, Sarah Beth, Stephen, people who are in attendance? Anybody wants to add anything? Jay?
So Vonda, when, I'm, I'm trying to recall, was it the last board meeting or the meeting back? I'm going to take a look quickly. When our appeal was rejected, you applied for a grant. And that grant, I believe we were approved of the grant. And at the time, that grant was seen as an opportunity to go back and look at our curriculum and give us the opportunity. And from the funding side, you sort of said that, you know, it would meet most of our needs, if not some of them. I heard something new today. What I heard was Erin said this is going to be an ongoing cost, which is something I hadn't foreseen. And so this is, I think, a great opportunity to go back and say, yes, either give us more time, more support. Alternatively, you know, let us continue what we're doing at a very high level and deliver these great results that we're delivering in our school district. So I'm fully supportive of this letter. I think it's a great idea. But I just wanted to get some clarification on the fact that we wouldn't lose any of the funding, should they sort of not go ahead with our appeal?
So I don't anticipate that they're going to go ahead with our appeal. I anticipate that any change would have to come through this type of voice action. I think they've been pretty clear that they've made their decisions and that we need to pick one of those programs. And so the funding, the, the right to read grant and the small town right to read grant would be used for, it's very specific for one of the specifically approved state programs. You know, I think, without getting on my soapbox, that there are many other hidden costs to a decision like that. For me, one of the biggest ones is a kind of, kind of like a hidden cost of almost of a lack of confidence in what our teachers are doing and what they have done for years. And they have committed to professional learning and getting to know their students and build relationships and use their learning about what's best for literacy practices to help our children read. And I've said, ever since you hired me, we're not done. We still have children that are not able to read well, fluently at an early age. But I feel like a decision that the state made also sends a very strong message to our teaching staff across the state, that there's a lack of confidence in their ability and a lack of respect for their work. And that hurts me. And now I'll step off my soapbox.
Thanks, Vonda.
Thank you, Vonda.
Good points.
Welcome.
Any other, Mike, I think I saw your hand, yep?
Yeah, great points, Vonda. And thank you, Erin and Vonda, for drafting this letter. I just want to be, I just want to be clear on what we're asking for here. And so it seems like what we're asking for is to not be required to pay for any one of these seven programs. And does that imply also that we should be allowed to just, that, that our plan as a district is to continue doing what we've been doing because we've been able to maintain a high level of academic performance as indicated by test scores? Is that the implication here?
So I can speak from my perspective, and then maybe, Vonda, if you want to add two things I would say. One is, I've had two kids go through Beacher. One is in sixth grade and one is in second grade. I see a major difference in how they were taught to read. I can tell you firsthand, I think that there's, when we think about science of reading, I can, I personally have seen it implemented in a way with my younger one, that, that it just, it wasn't as, as rigorously there as the older one. But I think what it's saying, Mike, is not, hey, we're doing good, our test scores are great, like, please don't. Do I think some school districts might do that? Maybe. I think the reason I'm comfortable with this as a board member is that I've seen Vonda lean in to the science of reading ever since we got notification of this legislation, right? She's like, signed us up to be part of this small cohort of, of superintendents that are learning how to do the science of reading really well. Like, she advocated for our school district to be part of that. She's pulled together all of our, our, our staff at those grade levels to figure out what is working and not working, and how can we change this? Part of that was her prepping for this application and figuring out how do we get our curriculum even more aligned with it? I think for me, what it is, is I, I, I don't want to spend six figures on a curriculum to fix a problem that I generally don't see us having. Do I think that we can improve our literacy and our, and our reading? Yes. Do I think that we are currently doing that? Yes. Do I think Vonda's moving forward with that and will continue with you at the helm of our curriculum committee? Yes. So if I have a choice, I'd rather spend those six figures helping the kids that are still struggling to read. I'd rather spend those six figures providing targeted interventions to those kids that we're just not going to get. I think we're going to buy a curriculum, we're going to implement it, and three years later, we're going to see the same test scores we're seeing right now. And it's going to feel like a, like, well, what changed? Again, if I hadn't seen us moving towards the science of reading personally, if I hadn't seen all of Vonda and Lisa's and Jimmy, and I'm sure there's so many more people that are involved in leaning into the science of reading in the school, I might feel more concerned about this. But because I've seen that, this, I don't necessarily want to be compelled to spend six figures.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, yeah. And I, I agree with that. So, and I think the argument is laid out well in the letter that if the goal is to improve and to help all schools and districts achieve high performance, well, we've been doing that. So why are you requiring us to, to adopt one of these seven programs? So I, I agree, and to pay for it. So I, I, I think I agree with that argument. And, and I, and I think, and I agree with requesting or, I, I agree with what we're trying to ask for here in the letter ultimately, is to not be required to do that. I guess what I'm, what I don't want to happen, though, is for us to, if this were to be granted, to, just rest on our laurels in any kind of way. I think that we, I think there is room for improvement. And I agree with you. I, I love that Vonda has really taken the bull by the horns here and has been looking closely into this on ways in which we can go beyond where we're currently at. So I'd like to see those efforts continue if we are in some way allowed to opt out of this or not have to pay for, for one of these seven programs. I think we, I just want us to continue this move to improving our reading curriculum and not feel like, you know, what we've been doing up to date has been working, and so let's just continue doing that.
I'm pretty confident, Mike, that we have a group of administrators who are committed to the science of reading. And I think that although it was really difficult to move through the process of the waiver in terms of the amount of work that was done, I think it was very insightful for the administration and the reading people. And I think they have great data now to move things forward. And I don't think that the ask of the legis, of the legislators in this letter is going to stop the ship from, our ship from continuing to sail and, and move forward. I, I have a real sense of commitment from the people who are in the trenches. I don't know if anybody feels differently, but I, I think that's where we're headed. So I'm going to ask if you're willing to have your name put, added to the letter, and then we'll send it out with those board members who wish to be included on that. With the confidence that our administration will continue to work as always in the area of all academic areas, but especially this reading area. So Stephen, you okay with this?
I think it's fantastic. Thank you for putting this together.
Thanks, Stephen. Sarah Beth?
Yes, very, thank you.
Jay?
Yes, thanks, Erin, Vonda. I think it's good to have options, and that's what you're trying to create here.
Lauren?
I have not had an opportunity to look at it closely enough. Can I answer you tomorrow after I've taken a look?
Sure.
I'm just- Processing a lot right now.
Yeah, absolutely. Shoot me off a text or Vonda a text or an email, and we'll work on getting it out by the end of this week. Jeff?
Great letter, yes, thank you.
Mike?
Yes.
Erin? You happy with your letter?
I am. Can we also send it to Brooke if we're going to give a little delay and just see if she-
Yeah. Well, I was going to reach out to Brooke tomorrow, just to check on how she's feeling and ask for her, for her approval as well. So-
Some nighttime reading.
Yeah. If the fever hasn't taken over, for sure, yes. So Vonda, we'll, we'll work on getting Lauren and Brooke's information and then work on getting that letter out by the end of this week. Thank you, board members. I think this like counts for us being advocates for great education. Cave. And that's one of the things that was an indicator for when we received that award this past November. So well done, team. And Erin, Vonda, thank you, because there was really a short turnaround in making this all happen from Thursday at noon time, when we, we were all talking about this, to the letter being ready over the weekend. So, and Marsha for always making it look great, thanks. Upcoming meeting presentations, the February board meeting will include a math update and an update on the new kindergarten entrance legislation. So I would ask board members to reach out to Vonda if there's anything specific that you would like to see addressed in either of those presentations and updates, so that she can be prepared for our February meeting. Moving on to item four, new business, accept certified staff retirements. Vonda, do you have something you want to say before we?
I, I do just, I do just have a few words. You know, I would have liked to had time to go through their files and kind of cull out a few nuggets to kind of support. But I, I do have some, some thoughts I'd like to share. We, you know, I, we have two retirements that, you know, are before you this evening. And while we'll fill the positions, for both of these, it will be very difficult to fill the shoes and the impact of the individuals, about which I will speak. So the first one that I'd like to briefly talk about is Louise Golden. Louise started teaching fifth grade at BRS in 1989. So she's right along the lines of, you know, me. And in 1991, she became part of a decision that ultimately, I believe, changed the future of Beacher Road School by joining with some parents and a few teachers to plan the MAG program, the multi-age group program, which was ultimately approved by our board in 19- which was ultimately approved by our board in 1992. Since that time, Louise has been an anchor and a cornerstone. She's led a program that I believe fosters creativity and independence and employs student choice and project-based learning. Those are all tenants that you see in our vision and our mission in our school as well as for our Board of Education. The MAG program is one of the cornerstones of Beecher Road School. And Louise, Louise's impact really reaches far and wide. She's compassionate. If you've ever met her, she's articulate and she's inspiring and she has the greatest accent. She'll be sincerely missed and we wish her all the best as she starts the next step in which I am confident will be an exciting and rewarding adventure because she may be finishing her time at Beecher Road School this year, but she's most definitely not finishing her impact on children or our world. The second person that we also were sad to see, these are two very devastating retirements for us. Thrilled for both of these individuals, Monique McDonald. So Monique started teaching at Beecher Road School, I think it was 2001, as a language arts consultant, then for a few years, I believe she taught third grade and then returned to her position as a language arts consultant. And she continues to serve in that role with, we have an incredible trio of literacy leaders. It's like a powerhouse right there. And Monique touches Beecher Road School in many ways. She services students needing extra literacy support. She coaches teachers. She researches, researches resources and strategies to help teachers in the classroom, assists with benchmark assessments and leads curriculum development. And, you know, I have to say, I've worked in four districts with countless professional educators and I can share that Monique is at the forefront of educators who lead with a lens focused on what's best for learners. And she combines that lens with a very strong work ethic, a passion for current research, integrity and a sense of humor. And it really felt like a double whammy to receive two such significant retirement letters in one year. But I can't think of two more deserving teachers. And just as an aside, Monique shared that her plans next year are to skip the snow and ice in winter in three different locations in Europe over three months. So I will look forward to her postcards.
Wow, maybe she'll take some of us along with her.
That's very. Great people.
Vonda, thank you for, for sharing those great words about two really exceptional educators and, and members of the Beecher Road School community. They were my colleagues and friends and it's bittersweet when I see these people leaving Beecher. But I know the great things that they'll do in, in retirement because of the exceptional work that they did while they were in the school. So, so I'll make the motion that we accept the retirement of Monique McDonald, effective June 30th, 2024, with much regret. Do I have a second to that motion? Stephen, thank you. And we'll call for the vote. Stephen?
Yes.
Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that's unanimous. One of these days, somebody, you know, we should just all say no because it's, it's so sad that we, we lose such great people. But wonderful things are going to happen for them. So my next motion will be that we accept the retirement of Louise Golden, effective June 30th, 2024. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Who said that? Was that you, Erin? Was that you, Lauren?
I think it was Erin and I at the same time, so you can.
Lauren, we're putting you, so that, there you go. Lynn Piazek made the motion, Lauren Fanchese seconded the motion. Stephen? Call for the vote. Thank you, Sarah Beth?
Yes.
Jay?
Lynn, I'm going to say no. Both my kids had Miss Golden. They had Miss Golden. She was excellent and she's a legend is the only word that can describe her.
Agreed.
So I'm going to say no on this. We want her to stay. Both my kids are here and they're both saying I should say no, and we want her to stay.
Okay, Jay. Jay, I hate to tell you, I think she's going to.
I have to say.
But I love it. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, although not unanimously. Thanks, Jay, and thank your kids too, because that's the testament. The testament is when the kids say, where are they going? Why are they going? So thanks for that, Jay. Thanks for sharing. So we're up to the point of the meeting where I'll make my monthly community service announcements. The Board of Education is scheduled to present our proposed 24, 25 capital and operating budgets to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance on Wednesday, January 24. Donna or Vonda, can you help me with the time or we don't have?
Seven. I think it's seven.
What? I'm sorry?
I think it's seven, I think.
Okay.
It's in the seven o'clock hour. I don't know that it's seven on the dot.
So somewhere around seven, if we get any confirmation for a more specific time, we'll send a notice out to you. But if board members could, if your schedule permits and you could attend to support our budget at that presentation, it would be appreciated. The curriculum committee will meet on Thursday, February 1st at four o'clock. The policy committee is scheduled to meet on Monday, February 5th at 4:30 PM. The finance committee will meet on Tuesday, February 13th at 4:30 PM. And the next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, February 26th at seven o'clock PM because we are off on the third, the building closed on the third Monday of February. We are up to item five on the agenda, public comment. Again, I would ask participants, if you have public comment, to please raise your hand in the participants list. I do not see any hands raised. I'm not particularly fond of the participants list now that they've done something to WebEx, but I don't think there's any hands raised. Erin, policy committee is Monday, February 5th, 4:30.
You're calling out my texting. I missed when the policy committee.
Okay, it's easier than me texting back.
It's Wednesday, which Wednesday?
Feb, February 5th. It's, no, it's Monday, February 5th.
Got it. I better be there now. All right.
Okay, great. There is no need for an executive session this evening. And so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jeff Hughes. And that would be at 9:20 PM. Do I have a second to Jeff's motion to adjourn? Jay Daya, appreciate that. And so I do believe for adjournment, we can just raise our hands and I can look at you all wave at me. I see Jay, Jeff, and yeah, hi, Sarah Beth, thank you. That's unanimous, Marsha. Thank you all for joining us on this icy evening. Please, if you have to go out, be safe and have a, have a warm evening.